All for our members this morning, so we can get that on record.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure. Member Bitzer?
Oh, here.
Member Ely? Member Garcia?
Yes, here.
Member Hunker?
I am here.
Chair Sweeney?
Here.
Vice Chair Trivial David?
Here. Sorry, here.
Thank you. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you so much, Ms. Corral. With that, I am looking at our agenda and I'm looking for approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or changes to that? And if not, I'd love to entertain a motion.
I move we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Member Garcia.
I'll second.
Thank you, Member Hunker. With that, Ms. Corral, would you mind doing a roll call vote on that?
Yes. Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Member Ely?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes. Yes.
Hunker?
Uh, yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trivial David?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Corral. Next on our agenda with that, Agenda Item Number Three is the approval of the March 24, 2023 regular meeting minutes. And I know that was sent to board members and we'd love to open the discussion if there's any changes or revisions to those meeting minutes. If not, we can entertain a motion. Yes, Member Hunker?
Well, hearing no comments, I have moved we approve the minutes to the March 24, 2023 meeting.
Thank you, Member Hunker.
I'll second.
Thank you, Member Bitzer, for your second. Any discussion on that? If not, Ms. Corral, would you mind doing a roll call vote on the Member Hunkers' motion to approve the March meeting minutes?
Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Member Ely?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Hunker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trivial David?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Corral. And we will go on to the next with that approval. We'll go on to the next Agenda Item Number Four, which is public comment. Ms. Corral, have you received anybody that wanted to make public comment this morning?
No, I have not received any comments.
Thank you for that. I'm looking at our platform. I don't see anybody raising their hand. So with that, I think we'll go on to the next item, which is Item Number Five, Discussion Regarding Pending Litigation. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there's really not a lot of updates on my end right now. I know that you are all awaiting the order on the Roper matter that was heard, that was decided upon at the last meeting. I am making some progress on it. It's going to be pretty lengthy, as I'm sure is customary, but have that done soon. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Yes, Member Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do you have any news about whether or not the appeal was scheduled? The Petroleum, Independent Petroleum Association Appeal?
Good question. Now, there is not, still awaiting the calendar from the Court of Appeals. Have not heard anything on that yet.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you for your question, Member Garcia. Any other board members have any questions for Mr. Rice? I don't see any. Thank you for that update, Mr. Rice. Appreciate that and appreciate your support for our board this morning as well. Just wanted to mention that as well. So that takes us to our next item, which is Item Number Six, EIB 22-64, Public Hearing Petition to Amend 11.5.1.16 NMAC. And that will be, at this point, I will turn this over to our Hearing Officer, Member Hunker, to proceed. So I'll pass the baton to you, Member Hunker. And I know we have Christopher Attencio here from the Environment Department as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Chair Sweeney. Is the Court Reporter, Ms. Dubois, ready?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and go on the record. The hearing will please come to order. Today is April 28, 2023. The time is now 9:09 a.m. My name is William Hunker. I have been designated by the Board to serve as Hearing Officer, and I will be advised by the Board's Interim Counsel from the Office of the Attorney General Carl Rice. And I'd like to thank Mr. Rice for his assistance in preparing for my role today. May we have a roll call of the Board, Ms. Corral?
I'm sorry, you want me to?
Do a roll call for the record, so we can know who's here.
Okay. Member Bitzer?
Present.
Member Ely?
Present.
Member Garcia?
Here.
Member Hunker?
Present.
Chair Sweeney?
Present.
Vice Chair Trivial Davis?
Present.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Corral. So all members of the Board are present. This is a hearing in EIB 22-64R to consider the proposed amendment to 11.5.1.16 NMAC, Occupational Health and Safety Record Keeping and Reporting Occupational Injuries, Illnesses, and Fatalities. This hearing is being held in a hybrid format, in person and online via the WebEx platform. 20.1.1.306 NMAC does allow for participation by conference, telephone, or other similar device, given all participants are able to hear. If at any point during the hearing technical difficulties arise, please bring them to my attention, and efforts will be made to remedy the situation. The petitioner in this matter is the New Mexico Environment Department, Environmental Protection Division, Occupational Health and Safety Bureau. No other person filed a notice of intent to present technical testimony. There will be a designated time for any member of the general public to present non-technical testimony. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, State Rules Act, the Environmental Improvement Act, the Occupational Health and Safety Act, and with this Board's rulemaking procedures. This hearing is being reported by Teresa Dubois from Albuquerque Reporting Services. Parties interested in obtaining a copy of the transcript may contact the Court Reporter directly at the conclusion of the hearing. Copies of the proposed amendment have been available on the department's website and at the department's office, as well as to interested parties upon request. The hearing will be conducted in a fair and impartial manner to assure that the relevant facts are fully elicited and to provide a reasonable opportunity for all persons to be heard without making the hearing unreasonably lengthy or burdening the record with unnecessary repetition. The rules of civil procedure and evidence shall not apply to this hearing. As Hearing Officer, I will make such orders as may be necessary to preserve decorum and protect the orderly hearing process. To that end, I ask that all persons at this hearing please silence their cell phones. During the hearing, if you are online, please be sure to mute yourself until you wish to speak to help minimize background noise. The hearing shall proceed as followed. Number one, Board staff will present prefiled exhibits. Exhibits admitted into evidence are available for review by the public. Number two, all testimony will be taken under oath. Number three, as Hearing Officer, I will rule on any objections to evidence and will admit any relevant evidence unless I determine that the evidence is incompetent or unduly repetitious. Number four, any person offering an exhibit shall provide an original to the Board Administrator and a copy to each of the Board members and to its legal counsel, and shall also provide additional copies for persons attending the hearing. If visual aids are used, legible copies must be submitted for inclusion in the record. Please know the Board will not make copies of any exhibits used at this hearing. Number five, any person who wishes to make a brief opening statement before presentation of his or her direct testimony may do so. Number six, petitioner will present its direct testimony on the proposed amendment, and petitioner's witnesses will stand for cross-examination by the Board and any other person in attendance. Number seven, if any other persons, including members of the public, wish to present non-technical testimony about the proposed amendment, they will testify as called upon. If you are a member of the public, please email the Board's Administrator at medai, m-a-d-a-i dot corral, c-r-r-a-l, at e-n-v dot n-m dot g-o-v to notify us that you intend to present non-technical testimony and include any exhibits being offered. Number eight, because this hearing is being transcribed, please remember that only one person may speak at any one time. Please direct your testimony and answers to questions to the Board members. Number nine, any person who testifies is subject to cross-examination on the subject matter of his or her testimony and on matters affecting his or her credibility. The petitioner has the option of presenting its witnesses as a panel for purposes of cross-examination. The Board members and the Hearing Officer will cross-examine first, followed by cross-examination by the public. Please remember to direct all testimony and answers to questions to the Board itself, even if someone other than a Board member has asked the witness a question. Any person attending the hearing is entitled to conduct whatever cross-examination is required for a full and true disclosure of matters at issue in the hearing. As Hearing Officer, I may limit cross-examination to avoid harassment, intimidation, needless expenditure of time, or undue repetition. Number 10, at the petitioner's discretion and if time permits, rebuttal testimony may be given at the conclusion of the public testimony in the same order as the direct testimony. Number 11, any person who wishes to make a brief closing argument may do so at the conclusion of the hearing in the same order as the direct testimony. We will now proceed. Does the Board staff have any exhibits to introduce as evidence?
Um, Mr. Hearing Officer, I have received 15 exhibits.
And are those the exhibits from NMED staff?
I'll give you one second.
Mr. Attencio, if you want to chime in and offer any clarification, that would be helpful.
Member Hunker, thank you. The department did submit 15 exhibits with its notice of intent to present technical testimony, though I wouldn't be able to comment or opine as to whether Ms. Corral or Ms. Jones received any other ones. But we did submit 15 exhibits.
Thank you, Mr. Attencio. I see that there are 15 exhibits on the, in the docket listing under the Environmental Improvement Board. Ms. Corral, have you received any other exhibits?
Uh, no, Mr. Hearing Officer, just the 15 exhibits.
Okay, so are there any questions from the Board members or objections to inclusion of these exhibits? Hearing none. Exhibits one through 15 are admitted into the record. If there are no other preliminary matters, we will move to testimony by the petitioner. We will begin with technical testimony by the petitioner. Does the petitioner wish to make a brief opening statement?
Yes, thank you, Member Hunker. Members of the Board, if you can make a brief opening statement and then proceed with a direct testimony, if that's good.
Yes, please do proceed.
Thank you, and good morning, Hearing Officer Hunker, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this morning on this rulemaking. Since began with the filing of a request for rulemaking petition filed December 9, 2022, to rescind 11.5.1.16C NMAC, the COVID reporting rules. With me today, the department has as its main witness Mr. Garth Hayden, who has submitted prefiled written technical testimony. The department also has Mr. Bob Janeway, Bureau Chief of the Occupational Health and Safety Bureau, who is available as a policy expert and to answer any other questions that may come up, but he's not providing direct technical testimony. That's all that I have, but I did have one question, Mr. Hearing Officer. If you would like, the department would like to provide both witnesses as a panel at the conclusion of Mr. Hayden's testimony. But my question is, if you would like both sworn in at the same time, or you prefer to do that one at a time?
Let's go ahead and swear them both in at the start of the testimony here, if that's agreeable. Are there any objections to that? Hearing not. Hearing none. And Court Reporter, would you please swear the two witnesses in?
Is that Mr. Hayden and Mr. Janeway that I'm swearing in? Just to double check.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Janeway and Mr. Hayden, if I can get you both to raise your right hand, please. Do you both swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Attencio, you can go ahead with testimony.
Thank you. Mr. Hayden, I just have a couple of questions for you. And then I'll have you stand for questions. Could you please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Garth Hayden, G-A-R-T-H-H-A-Y-D-E-N.
Thank you. Could you briefly describe your current position?
I am the Occupational Health and Safety Bureau Operations and Planning Manager. I've been in that position since November of 2022.
Yeah. What do you do as the Operations and Planning Manager, just briefly?
I oversee broad strategy for the Bureau, as well as grant performance and work with Mr. Janeway on developing policy.
Okay. And could you briefly describe your experience and education?
I have an Associate's Degree in Anthropology from Niagara Community College. I have a Bachelor's Degree in Anthropology from the University of New Mexico. I have over 20 years of project management experience, most of which has been in environmental consulting and regulatory compliance.
Thank you. Mr. Hayden, did you prefile written technical testimony in this matter?
I did.
Do you have any changes to make to that testimony?
Uh, no changes to make. There was one thing in the opening about Environmental Protection Bureau. We have been switched to the, we've been moved to the Environmental Health Bureau, or Environmental Division.
Thank you. Did you adopt your prefiled written testimony today?
I do.
And can you just give us a brief summary of your testimony as far as what the department is requesting?
Yes. So the novel coronavirus of 2019 known as COVID-19 is a communicable disease that's contagious to humans. That spread rapidly at the end of 2019, early 2020, in response to the pandemic. And the environmental, in December of 2020, the Environmental Improvement Board passed a law requiring employers to report positive cases. While COVID-19 does continue to present a severe danger to the public health and workplace safety in New Mexico, we have as a state taken aggressive measures to reduce the spread of the disease, and treatments have been developed to mitigate its impact, including vaccines and therapeutics. In response to these increased measures, the governor had declared a public health emergency, but that has now expired as of November of 2022. In addition, the apparatus, the funding and apparatus, basically personnel and team necessary to support the immediate reporting required by the rule, immediate reporting of positive cases required by the rule, is no longer sustainable. The funding isn't available, and the personnel are no longer with us. Because of all this, we're respectfully asking the Environmental Improvement Board to use its authority to remove the rule requiring employers report positive COVID-19 tests to the Environmental Safety Bureau.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. That's all the questions I have. Member Hunker, both of my witnesses would stand for any questions at the Board or anyone else may have.
Okay, thank you. Does the Board have any questions or wish to cross-examination either of these witnesses? Uh, Member Bitzer, go ahead.
Well, if we were to act on this today, when would it go into effect, or when would the revision take effect?
Um, is that directed to me? I hope immediately.
Member Hunker, I am not a witness in this and only representing the department. But if it's okay, I can direct the Board to the correct regulation that would control this.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Member Hunker, Member Bitzer, it would be under 20.1.1 and 406 and 407. A lot of that would be dependent on the date of, if the Board were to approve the department's request, the date of that order. And that sets in line the post-hearing requirements. There's a requirement of a 15-day filing, the rule amendment with state records within 15 days of that order. And then that would include publication in the New Mexico Register. And I believe the adoption, the official adoption, is the signature of the written order. And the effect I believe the effective date would be the publication, if I'm not mistaken, in the New Mexico Register, which the earliest that could potentially be based on filing deadlines would be May 31. The next day would be the second week of June.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, Member Bitzer? Do any other any other Board members have questions? Seeing none. Does anyone else, including the audience, wish to cross-examine these witnesses? Okay. Ms. Corral, have you received any, any comments requesting to question or cross-examine these witnesses?
I know, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Okay, thank you. I believe that will be all for the witnesses, unless we need to call them back later in the proceedings. Is there any further testimony from the department?
Member Hunker, no, the department has nothing further to provide, and that's the substance of our case.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Attencio. We will now hear non-technical testimony, take written statements from members of the public. Any testimony must be limited to the proposed amendment. The Board is unable to take any testimony unrelated to the proposed amendment. Ms. Corral, have you received any comments from the public or any information that there's any members of the public that would like to make statements regarding this amendment?
No, Mr. Hearing Officer, I have not received any.
Okay, hearing none. We may proceed and is, let me just ask if, Mr. Attencio, I assume there's no need for any rebuttal testimony, but I just wanted to verify that you don't have anything further for the Board in terms of this proposed action.
Yes, that is correct. Nothing further.
Okay, hearing no further comments or expressions of a wish to comment. I would like to thank the Board and everyone present for their participation today. A quorum of Board members did attend this hearing. The hearing notice indicated that a decision might be made at the conclusion of the hearing. The Board may immediately deliberate and decide on the proposed regulatory changes at the conclusion of the hearing. The record of this public hearing is now closed. Let the record show this hearing was adjourned at 9:32 a.m. And I will now, since the hearing's closed, I will turn it back over to Chair Sweeney. And I will now, since the hearing's closed, I will turn it back over to Chair Swina.
Thank you, Member Hunker. Sorry, it took me a minute to find the unmute button there. It was hidden. I appreciate, again, Mr. Atencio and staff from NMED for attending our meeting this morning and the hearing. And thank you, Member Hunker, for being our hearing officer for this item. I'm trying to get to the script here. After the hearing, after this is, now that we have noted that members of the board were present and we have a quorum. If the, and I think, looking at everybody's, yeah, screen here, seems to be that we can deliberate immediately on this. Is that what everybody's good with? Okay, all right. If there's anybody contrary to that, please raise your hand. If let's see, I'm trying to read my script as well. So since we will be deliberating immediately, you know, if we determine at any point we need additional testimony or documentary evidence for a proper decision on the proposed amendment, the board may, consistent with due process requirements, reopen the hearing for such additional evidence only. So I just wanted to share that. As we go forward here, let me see. Okay. So with that, I know, let's pull up, if we can, just so that we're all on the same page. I like to do this since we're all virtual. If I may, share my screen. I think I can. Oh, may I share, Ms. Corral, my screen?
Yes, you'll need to give me access.
Okay. And what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna pull up the amendment just so that we all have it in front of us. Making sure for the record. All right, so on your screen, I should see Attachment one, NMED. Is that what everybody sees? Okay. See if I can. When I did that, my screen, there you go. Okay, here we are. All right, so it seems pretty straightforward. I can zoom in a little bit. I see people scrunching down there. So it's just item number C, which is reporting novel coronavirus within four hours of learning that employee tested positive for the coronavirus disease, two thousand and nineteen COVID nineteen. Each employer shall report the positive test to the Bureau at the email, comma, telephone or facsimile number specified in subsection B of this section. And again, another strikeout, the department has provided the rapid response submission portal that may be used to satisfy the reporting requirements of section C. The rapid response submission portal is available on the Bureau's website at the website noted. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions or, now that we enter deliberations for members of the board and/or discussion. So I want to open it up here, members. Any comments? And yes, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis.
Well, actually, I think my only comment is that I think this is the fastest hearing we've had. Like, this is our record, so. My coffee's still hot.
Thank you for that, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. Yeah, any other comments or discussion? Yes, Member Hunker.
Yes, now that I'm a member and not the hearing officer, it would have gone even faster if I could have spoken more clearly, I think. But it seems like this is a sensible and appropriate thing to do at this stage in things since the emergency situation has ended and since the department no longer has staff to review and handle these reports anyway. It seems like this would be a thing, good thing for the board staff and the employers. So it sounds pretty straightforward and sensible to me.
Thank you, Member Hunker. I appreciate that comment. And I think I'm in that, in that mindset as well, just to provide that additional comment. With that, if, I don't know if there's any further discussion needed. As Member Hunker noted, this is one of our most efficient and quickest hearings, and all our coffees are still warm. So with that, I'm just wondering if we're at a point, if somebody, if one of the board members wanted to propose a motion regarding this proposed amendment.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to, and how was the motion?
Thank you, Member Ely.
I'd like to make a motion to amend eleven point five point one point sixteen NMAC as presented by the department in the attachment one for the reasons presented in the department's petition.
Thank you, Member Ely. I have a second.
And counsel, could you please tell me if that's a motion? Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bitzer, for your second. And then I'm gonna check with legal counsel, Mr. Rice Dad.
What was the question again?
What Member Ely was asking is whether that was a sufficient motion.
Oh, yes. Okay, yes, that sounds fine. Thank you. Very well put.
Thank you, Mr. Rice Dad. And so we have a motion by Member Ely and a second by Member Bitzer on the floor. Looking around, if there's no further discussion on this. And I'm gonna look to Ms. Corral for a roll call vote on Member Ely's motion.
Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Member Ely?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Hunker?
Yes.
Chair Swina?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Corral, for that. And appreciate that. Again, appreciate our hearing officer, Mr. Member Hunker, taking on that task this morning for the board. And with that, I'm gonna go back to our agendas. Before I do, Mr., oh, yes, Member Ely.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say something. I wanted to thank the OSHA team for all their hard efforts during the height of the pandemic. I know it was stressful, but the team really pulled together. They're very creative. They got the work done. Excuse me, Chief Genaway and Mr. Hayden were core members of that OSHA team, and I think their efforts really did save lives. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Ely, for that. And I would love to echo that, you know, having served on the Economic Recovery Council. And I was hearing the great strides that NMED and that particular team really stepping up, the tracking and stepping up the, with really minimal resources and support. I know there's a lot of extra hours that NMED had to put in, especially at the very beginning, trying to figure out how all this data could be tracked and also shared with the public. And so I really appreciate that, and I understood that the OSHA, OSHA team, OSHA Bureau at the time really stepped up. So thanks for noting that, Member Ely, and just thank NMED and the team. Thank you so much. With that, before we go from this agenda item, Mr. Rice Dad, I just want to make sure that we've addressed everything with this agenda item.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we'll go on to our next agenda item, number seven, which is the next meeting and upcoming matters. With that, would to, just note, Ms. Corral and Mr. Rice Dad, do you know of upcoming matters for our next meeting in May?
Madam Chair, I'm not aware of any at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Corral, I don't know if Pam, Ms. Jones has been tracking anything?
At this point, I'm not aware of anything.
Okay.
Definitely ask Pam when she's back.
Okay, wonderful. With that said, let's keep it. Yes, Member Hunker.
I sent around an email, but if we do have a meeting in May, I will not be able to attend. I'll be out of the country, so.
Okay, thank you for that update, Member Hunker. And I'll keep that in the back of my mind as we figure out if we'll have agenda items to take up in a May EIB meeting. Appreciate that. So we'll keep the same meeting day that we have. And I believe, double-check the calendar here, and correct me if I'm wrong, members, but I have it at the on May twenty-six. Is that correct? Okay, I see head nods. All right. Well, looking forward to seeing everybody if we have items on our agenda to discuss on May twenty-six. And again, I always appreciate, oh, yes, Member Hunker.
One other question. I was wondering, Chair Swina, if there's any update on filling our vacant seat on the board.
Thank you for that, Member, Member Hunker. At this point, I have not received any updates from Melissa. I think it's Melissa Salazar's office. Ms. Corral, do you know of anything?
Um, I don't. I know Ms. Jones has been working. But at this point, I have no updates.
Thank you, Ms. Corral. And I will, I will check in again with Ms. Salazar on any updates on that. Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments from our board members? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move re-adjourn.
Thank you, Member Hunker.
A second.
Thank you, Member Garcia. With that, if there's no further discussion, Ms. Corral, would you mind doing a roll call vote on our adjournment motion?
Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Member Ely?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Hunker?
Yes.
Chair Swina?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Corral. And again, thank you to everybody who came this morning to our EIB meeting virtually. And as always, thank you, Mr. Rice Dad, for your support of our board. And we'll look for any updates from your office as to the ongoing support for our board. Appreciate, appreciate you being here and appreciate you prepping us for this meeting.
Thank you.
And I hope everybody has a wonderful weekend and looking forward to next month's meeting. Thank you.
Bye.